18th, 2014 Board of Commissioners Meeting. We had thought that we had prepared enough space for everyone, but unfortunately, the overflow that we provided is not enough either. But the public hearing portion is only 15 minutes, so we hope that you will not need to stand for a longer period of time. I'm so sorry that we are pushed for space. Tonight, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Billy King, and he will introduce the person who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. King.
Madam Chair, members of the board and to the public, it's my pleasure this evening to bring before you a young man who attends my church. His name is Joshua Marcy. He's a rising fourth grader at Lake Rim Elementary School. And with him this evening is his father, Deacon Marcy. After I do the invocation, he will come forward and lead us in the pledge. Let us all please stand. Our Father, we come before you this day, thanking you for our life, health, and strength. Thanking you for allowing us to see this day, a day that we have never seen before and will never see again. Be with us now as we take care of the business of Cumberland County. Be with all of our citizens far and near, and special protection for our military citizens who may be serving in harm's way. This is our prayer. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joshua, very good job.
Good job, lady.
You did a great job. Thank you so much.
And now for our recognitions. The first recognition will be of Mr. Willie S. Getty, and that one will be by Ms. Lisa Childers.
Good evening. It's a special honor for me to be here this evening to present this award tonight. Mr. Getty, if you will come forward. Mr. Willie Getty was inducted into the North Carolina Hall of Fame in June during our 4H Congress event we have every year in Raleigh at the McKinnon Center. Mr. Getty is a longtime Cumberland County 4H volunteer. He was nominated by our office, the Cumberland County Cooperative Extension Office, and he was inducted into the 4H Hall of Fame. The association established a Hall of Fame as a way to recognize those individuals who have played critical roles in the development of our 4H program here in North Carolina. Getty is a lifelong resident of the Wade Community and currently serves on the Cumberland County Cooperative Extension Board of Advisors. His work with the 4H Youth Development and Cooperative Extension in Cumberland County has spanned over four decades. Mr. Getty led one of the largest 4H clubs in Cumberland County while supporting youth by traveling all over the state with a 4H drama troupe. As a 4H leader, Mr. Getty was well-known around our extension office. He could always be counted on to lend a helping hand in any activity that would benefit youth
Recreation Board, Advisory Board.
Good evening.
in 4H in Cumberland County. So with that, Mr. Getty, we thank you for what you have contributed to the 4H program
It's always an honor and privilege and a pleasure to recognize citizens that contribute
here in Cumberland County, and we would like to present this to you again on behalf of the North Carolina 4H Hall of Fame in Cumberland County.
This one sentence is, "Well, love is all things shall prevail."
so much energy and time to make this county a better place to live, work, and play. And so tonight, I have the honor of presenting to you two individuals that have served on the Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Recreation Commission. First of all, is Mr. Pone here?
J.D.
Okay. Mr. Smalser.
Yes, he's here.
Would you join me, sir? Let me tell you a little about this young man. This young man, matter of fact, he served on Parks and Rec while I was on Fayetteville City Council and also with the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. He did not play when it comes to our young people here in Cumberland County. Everything had to be right, and we had to represent those children well, and he did not mind taking a stand, a firm stand, I might add, for the children's rights and for the children, and for that, I'm grateful. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I would like to present this to you. County of Cumberland, certificate of appreciation presented to Dean Smalser, Jr., for outstanding dedication and service on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners dated this 18th day of August 2014, signed by our chairwoman, Jeanette Council, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Again, thank you so much for all that you have done for us, sir. Would you like to say a couple of words?
I would just thank you very much, and I'd just like to say that, hey, as long as you keep the kids busy and doing something, they stay out of trouble. That's the way I look at it. That's just the way I feel about it, and that's the way I've always been approached all the time. So, you know, if you can help a kid, help them, because they need it every day. Thank you.
And now for the public comment period. How many?
We have seven speakers signed up this evening.
Okay. There are seven speakers without objection, so that everyone can get a chance to speak. We will look at two minutes instead of three, so that everyone will get a chance to speak. Is there other direction I need to?
We just ask that each speaker address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address, please.
All right. Thank you.
Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Gray Evans.
My name is Gray Evans, 1874 Evans Dairy Road, Fayetteville. Good evening, my name is Gray, and thank you for your time. I've been back in Cumberland County for almost a year, and it was the best decision I've ever made. Despite the financial struggle of relocating a small business and starting over in that business, I knew I needed to do this. I was extremely disappointed when I heard that the city was entertaining the idea of a chicken slaughterhouse. And in addition to how close the processing center would be to my home and family farm, as well as the wastewater spraying fields, I immediately knew the risk of pollution were high, the river drinking water and the air. The quiet community of Cedar Creek would seriously be in jeopardy. I cannot even begin to skim the surface of the environmental, economical, or social risks associated with the facility being built, but it is much more than just jobs and no odor. If board members travel to Kentstown to view the spray fields in the facility, when is it our turn? Come to our community. Come see the older folks who cannot afford the property of their homes to value to decrease. Take a ride down the Cape Fear River and see people tubing, fishing, and the Jordan Plan. This is our livelihood. Give this community its due diligence. Hear from folks who have read the facts, done their research, and folks who understand the issues. We are asking for our turn. We would like to take a chance to have a public discussion and set an agenda so that agencies, organizations, municipalities, and Cumberland County and other areas can contribute. This is bigger than just Cumberland County. Sanderson is also...I'll skip that part, because I don't have enough time. We want to discuss scientific data such as pollution, wages, living wages, and case studies, all factors that will affect this area in the long term. Take a look at the amount of petitions signed and the amount of people who attended our informative meeting. Our voices need to be heard. It is critical that we schedule a meeting as soon as possible to present our side. Thank you for your time. May I approach with some paperwork, please?
Thank you.
I have a copy for everyone, and there's over 1,000 names on the petition.
Would you give it to the clerk, please? Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Johnny Evans.
Yes, my name is Johnny Evans. I reside at 3226 Sidemeal Road in Fayetteville. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for taking a few minutes to listen to some of the concerns that we have regarding the proposed Sanderson Chicken Slaughtering Plant on Cedar Creek Road, and thanks for your service to the citizens of Cumberland County. We knew you had been working hard to gather information. My concern is that it appears most of the information is coming from Sanderson, and we could all expect that it would be sugarcoated. Many facts we don't know, but some we do know, that are going to be processing 250,000 chickens a day, and they're going to need 125 million gallons of water. We know that some of y'all have fisted the plant, and it appeared to be clean and safe. I consider, take this into consideration. We're going much further. Long term is of great concern, the damage to the river, overload of what will percolate and thus become runoff, the massive concentration of chicken house that will require to supply the chickens. No one can tell me that they don't stink, and the trucks bringing them in, and the biotrops going out. One of our greatest concerns is the devaluing of property that is situated close to the plant or spraying fields. Who would want to build a new home close to the plant or the spraying fields or close to the chicken houses? Would any of you build a home close for your son or daughter? I don't think so. We've been made aware that options have been taken on tracts of land which are located adjacent to and across the road from existing homes and subdivision. The owners of these tracts do not reside on them and do have any invested interest in our community. My sister and I did visit Kentstown yesterday evening and this morning, and we did see the plant, which looked pretty good. I'm running out of time, and Kentstown almost looked like a ghost town, but there was no houses anywhere close to the plant that we saw, except three houses north of it. I know each of you want to help more people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third speaker is Mr. Justin Smith.
I'm Justin Smith, 2961 Cedar Creek Road, Fayetteville. I'm three tenths of a mile just down the road from the industrial port. Born and raised in Cumberland County, been here my whole life. I'm a 2007 graduate of NC State University, four-year degree in ag business management. I'm a local business owner. I farm 2,500 acres of cotton, soybeans, and tobacco in Cumberland County. More importantly for the night's issue, speaking against Sanderson Farms, I farm every single piece of cleared land that is on Fields Road. I know Fields Road very, very well. Fields Road is the area where they have options on several tracts of land to spray their wastewater. I've got some facts on their wastewater. These numbers came from comments that Sanderson has made that's been in the newspaper and online. They tell you they need 1.4 million gallons of wastewater that's going to be sprayed daily to operate the facility. When you translate those numbers into inches of rain per acre, that comes out to be between 62 and 75 inches of wastewater per acre, depending on how many acres they will truthfully spray on, which those numbers vary also. Average rainfall in Cumberland County is 46 to 48 inches annually. So we're talking about putting us over the 100 to 110 mark area of water and precipitation, rainwater and wastewater. Additionally, these types of land cannot stand that much runoff, that much water. I mean, this soil is not even perked. We ask, please, on your behalf, that we can have a public hearing before any vote is made, before any decision is thought about, and I say this respectfully, but the wool has been pulled over your eyes by Sanderson Farms, and we have uncovered the lies and the untruthful statements and what's really going on in this situation. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Our fourth speaker is Ms. Mabel Smith. I would appreciate it if you would let the speakers speak, and then we'll give you some time at the end to cheer.
I know he was good.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Mabel Smith.
To God be the glory. My name is Mabel C. Smith, 1606 Deep Creek Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, life resident of the great county of Cumberland. I realize this is not a public hearing tonight, it's a public forum, and we do thank you, Madam Chair and other Commissioners, for allowing us this opportunity to serve notice that we are strongly opposed to the Sanderson Slaughterhouse coming into the county of Cumberland. And we hope that you will listen to the citizens, as you've already done, some have spoken, and think of the many citizens of Cumberland County that pay taxes the same as the money that the Sanderson will be bringing in if they get here. They come in a lump sum, but you have thousands and thousands of us that are here, and we pay taxes, which will also be used for money coming in. You take this big lump coming in, and it's going to reduce the value of the property owners that are already here, which means that money is going to go down, and we're still going to be stuck in the rut that we are in. Sanderson will be coming in with money, but it will also be taking part of the money back to its home office. We think of all the effect this is going to have on the lives of our citizens, not only the financial properties or health, the environment. Think of our river. Think of all this stuff that is going to be dumped into the river and the river basin. It's not going to only affect Cumberland County, it goes on down to Wilmington and other parts of the county. We do hope that you will look at the full picture, think of the citizens and the residents of Cumberland County, and vote no for the Sanderson Slaughterhouse or Processing Plant, whatever you want to call it. Thank you. May God bless you, and good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Bill Hurley. Mr. Hurley, we are...I'm sorry, I'm trying to give everybody time, but...
There's so much applause, Madam Chair, I didn't hear my name called, but thank you.
All right, right. I'm trying to be fair and give everybody enough time, and I wish you would hold your applause until the end. Everybody's good, everybody's great.
I don't think there'll be applause, Madam Chair, that probably wouldn't be an issue.
Now see...
Thank you very much for the few minutes. I'm going to look at this from a different angle. You know, we're a large urban area now, over 300,000 people. We're all in it together, whether you live in the county or the city, it makes no difference. We've had an image problem for about 40 years now, a terrible image problem across this country and across our state. But for the past 30, 25 years, and those of you who have served in city government know how hard we have been working for the image of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. It's not easy, what we have achieved. We are really turning that around. Our area is becoming more and more popular, more and more favorable with the general public across this state than it ever has before. When I went to Raleigh, I served 12 years in the General Assembly. Every session, we had problems with environmental issues on hog waste. It seems to never end when you get into this type of business. I just don't want Fayetteville to be known as the chicken plant of North Carolina. You know, it's only 6.5 miles from a market house, one of the most historic buildings in North Carolina. It's just not the place. I think it's needed, we need it, but not in our backyard, 300,000 people. It will affect us all, and I think it's more important than the financial returns from this industry in our county for the goodwill and the reputation and image that we now created across this state, and I would hope that you would vote against it. It's very serious. The adult entertainment district that we did away with, we finally have gotten that behind us. We don't need anything else to distract us from negativity. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Willie Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, would you come forward, please? Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinhold.
Mr. Reinhold, will you come forward, please?
Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board of Commissioners, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinhold, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. In 2011, the U.S. Postal Service developed plans to consolidate hundreds of area mail processing and distribution centers. The Fayetteville plant on Green Street was identified for closure. In June, the USPS published a new plan, and our plant will close with the loss of about 400 high-paying jobs. There's been speculation that a major chicken producer may build a plant here, bringing about 1,000 new jobs to Cumberland County. This has fueled a frenzy of negative information loaded with distortions and inaccurate claims by mostly outsiders pushing their own agendas and special interests. My limited research of the unnamed corporation shows that it is a good employer and environmentally responsible company with 10 plants operating safely throughout the nation. For those who scoff at creating new jobs, perhaps you should talk to your neighbors, like I have, who have been unemployed for more than two years, looking for hope of finding work. We need employment opportunities here to give those who want to be productive and responsible members of our community the chance to go to work every day and support their families. Like you, I have a financial stake in Cumberland County and request that your decisions on any new development projects be based upon proven facts, demonstrated corporate performance, and not fall prey to distortions and inaccurate claims by outside special interests. I want Cumberland County to be a vibrant economy with full employment and business activity generating revenue by local governments, not higher taxes and fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We hand over to the speakers. Can I add my name to the list? You have about two minutes?
No, I'm sorry. Only those who have signed up. Madam Chair...
Maybe we have a public hearing, it's going to be heard later. It's my fault for not signing up for that.
Ms. Cooper, is that Mr. Cooper?
Willie Cooper is the speaker who has not appeared.
Who has not appeared. All right. Will you check the other room to see if Mr. Cooper is...
He's here.
Here he is. Come on, Mr. Cooper. Thank you. I'm sorry, we are limited to two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. How you doing, Commissioners, my fellow citizens here? I'm Willie Cooper. I'm retired, currently in the United States Air Force, and I live out in the area, not too far from the industrial target area for the proposed poultry plant out there. And thanks for the opportunity to talk about something that's very dear to my heart. I first heard of the city of Fayetteville from my brother, who served at Alborn. He's a Vietnam Vet, served, and his son also served here. And during my time in Air Force, during my time in Air Force at different installations, you would hear the term used in a joking manner, "Fayette-Nom." And I can tell you, in the military circle, it made you cautious about what assignment you took in particular. But during my time here, I had a chance to work with some of the senior military officials on the base while I was there, as the city of Fayetteville went after certain awards like the All-American Award. I heard some of the future scenarios that we talked about becoming as a city here, and during this timeframe, my wife began to teach at Southview High School. We made the decision to corporately...this is the place to be, because we heard about Fayetteville vision and Fayetteville future. I can tell you with my heart, had I known about particular plans that deviated from that, this would not have been the place for us to seek that type of retirement or opportunity for our future. We have a grandson right now. We have one on the way. And those individuals, like the family group, we like to spend time outside, we like to enjoy ourselves. We selected East Fayetteville. We selected Fayetteville because what we heard discussed during the time I was active, and we decided to live in East Fayetteville because it provided things like fresh air. You know, it reminded us of home, Somertown, Georgia, where the grandparents grew up at. It allowed us...it was not congested. We talked about opportunities and the growth, what was coming here, what we were pursuing as a city at that time. I can tell you that I look forward to the future, because I still expect that to happen, okay? And this particular proposal will definitely deviate from those plans and what I thought was happening in Fayetteville. So thank you guys very much for that, and thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, what we have here is a public comment period that we have each third Monday night for 15 minutes. When a decision is made, or if a decision about this particular plant is made, then all persons will be allowed to have comments. We will have a public hearing. This is a public comment period. Anyone can...may speak, but if we decide to entertain this idea before we do it, we must have a public hearing on the matter, so that citizens will get a chance to speak. At that time, the facts will be presented, you will get a chance to say whatever it is that you want to say before a decision is made. As Commissioners, we are mandated, we must look at both sides of every issue. Rest assured that we will carefully consider your concerns, all costs, and all benefits before making a final decision on anything of this magnitude. So we will hear from citizens before any decision is made. Right now, we are just vetting the plant, the possibility, that's all. And during my time in Air Force, during my time in Air Force, at different installations, you would hear the term used in a joking manner, "Fayette-nom." And I can tell you, in the military circle, it made you cautious about what assignment you took in particular. But during my time here, I had a chance to work with some of the senior military officials on the base while I was there, as the city of Fayetteville went after certain awards like the All-American Award. I heard some of the future scenarios that we talked about becoming as a city here. And during this timeframe, my wife began to teach at Southview High School. We made the decision to corporately, this is the place to be, because we heard about Fayetteville vision and Fayetteville future. I can tell you with my heart, had I known about particular plans that deviated from that, this would not have been the place for us to seek that type of retirement or opportunity for our future. We have a grandson right now. We have one on the way. And those individuals like the family group, like to spend time outside, like to enjoy ourselves. We selected East Fayetteville. We selected Fayetteville because of what we heard discussed during the time I was active. And we decided to live in East Fayetteville because it provided things like fresh air. You know, it reminded us of home, Somertown, Georgia, where the grandparents grew up at. It allowed us, it was not congested. We talked about opportunities and the growth, what was coming here, what we were pursuing as a city at that time. I can tell you that I look forward to the future because I still expect that to happen, okay? And this particular proposal will definitely deviate from those plans and what I thought was happening in Fayetteville. So thank you guys very much for that, and thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, what we have here is a public comment period that we have each third Monday night for 15 minutes. When a decision is made, or if a decision about this particular plant is made, then all persons will be allowed to have comments. We will have a public hearing. This is a public comment period. Anyone can, um, may speak. But if we decide to entertain this idea before we do it, we must have a public hearing on the matter, so that citizens will get a chance to speak. At that time, the facts will be presented. You will get a chance to say whatever it is that you want to say before a decision is made. As Commissioners, we are mandated, we must look at both sides of every issue. Rest assured that we will carefully consider your concerns, all costs, and all benefits before making a final decision on anything of this magnitude. So we will hear from citizens before any decision is made. Right now, we are just vetting the plant, the possibility, that's all. Mabel, I mean Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry. We've known each other a long time, Mr., but we can't make any public comments at this time. No more public comments.
No, Mr. Assistant.
You want everybody to stand who is in favor? Is that what you want? Is that all you wanted? I think I will ask that for you.
Thank you.
If you are... Wait a minute, that's the wrong way to ask it, isn't it?
Is there any opposition to standing?
If you understand exactly what Ms. Smith was asking for, stand up. All right, and you hear coming from the back room. The back room is full. All right. Thank you so much for coming, and we have others for other public hearings, so if you want to excuse yourselves, go right ahead. Let's take a five-minute break at this time. Those in favor, unanimous?
Item number two is the consent agenda.
Off motion approved.
Second.
Give her the motion, those in favor, unanimous?
Item number three is public hearings, uncontested rezoning cases. Case number A, case P-14-26.
Yes, again, there's no opposition to these cases. Planning Board voted approval. So unless you want it opened up, there is no opposition.
I'll take, I see two Commissioners ready with motions.
Madam Chair, I would move that we find the request consistent with the land use plan and approved and adopt the reasonable statement for all of four of these cases, and then I'll make the second motion, five of these cases.
Second.
Those in favor, unanimous?
And I would also move that we approve the Planning Board's recommendation and approve staff recommendation.
Second. Those in favor, unanimous? All right, thank you.
Item 3F is a contested zoning ordinance text amendment, case P-14-38.
I'm just going to make a quick comment on this, and I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney, who's going to explain the memo he put in, that's included in your packet. The issue of vocational school is still in court. The original case predated when you, as a board, added outdoor firing ranges as a specific use in the ordinance. Just make sure you know that that was added after the first court hearing. But you do have a memo in your packet from the county attorney on the history behind the definition, why this definition's in front of you, so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him explain it.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if you recall, back in February of this year, I requested and the Board took action to reconsider the action that was taken in the issuance of the third permit to what used to be called the Tiger Swan Firing Range, it's now called the Range Complex. That was to address some potential deficiencies in the initial enactment or action that the Board had taken back in October in awarding that permit. At that time, I recommended that the Board request the Planning Board to put together a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to define vocational school. My reason for that was that that has continued to be an issue in the litigation, and this litigation is still pending. In fact, we argued in the Court of Appeals in June, and that was one of the issues that was presented to the Court of Appeals even in June. It is not defined, a defined term in the ordinance, and because it continues to be subject to so much interpretation, I recommended that the Board asked the Planning Board to do the text amendment. The Board did so back in February, and the Planning Board has forwarded that text amendment to you in this case. If you look on the second page of my memo, there's a rather lengthy recommendation from me on the motion. My reason for that is, is the Court of Appeals just in July decided another case in zoning matters and continues to more stringently interpret the statutes that address these issues. You really have to have an explanation for the action that you take now stated in the motions. And this is like back a few months ago, we started going to two motions, and now we're adding an explanation that in an instance like this, concerning something as important as a text amendment, even if it's not subject to dispute, I strongly recommend that we follow that process. What I have put in that recommended motion for the Board is an explanation that I think fits the recommendation made by the Planning Board and the circumstances that have been in effect surrounding this. If the Board wishes to address or state a different explanation, you certainly are free to do so, but you just need to actually state it now in the motions. If there are any questions about that, I'll try to explain it further.
I'm trying to find the page. Mr. Melvin?
Yes. Is it appropriate, while it's in court, for the Board of Commissioners to come back and change the language while it's in the court of law?
Yes, sir, Mr. Melvin. In fact, that happens all the time in the state legislature and the Congress and at local governments, too. And one of the reasons that laws get passed is to address court cases and to address instances where there's not adequate or some interpretation questions about terms in the laws or ordinances that are being considered, and that's what one of these cases is. Vocational schools has never been an issue before because it's always applied to things that everybody thought of, like Fayetteville Tech, and really, I know it's about the only one, I guess. This is just the first time, but it has become an issue, and it's become an issue because it's really not defined.
Other discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
There is, I hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am very sorry. I'm having trouble following. All right. I will open the public hearing on case P-14-38. Are there speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we have one speaker in opposition.
Okay.
I would call on Ms. Sue Horn.
Good evening. I'm Sue Horn. My address is 7814 NC Highway, 210 South, Autreville, North Carolina. Even though my address is Autreville, I am a lifelong resident of Cedar Creek. Many of the people who I represent, the concerned citizens for Cedar Creek, are present tonight. We are opposed to the text amendment related to the definition of a vocational school. The amendment, simply phrased, excludes a firing range as a vocational school. We are aware that you may be encouraged to approve this amendment because you believe the Range Complex is good business for our county. We are aware that you may be encouraged to approve this amendment because the county attorney and the planning department recommend it. We're also aware that you are committed to allowing us, the members of the community who are impacted by the operation of the Range Complex, to make recommendations as well. We urge you to oppose this amendment, or at the very least, to postpone your vote on this amendment until legal rulings have been made in the existing court cases regarding allowing the Range Complex to continue operation. In October 2013, the North Carolina Superior Court ruled that the Tiger Swan facility, now known as the Range Complex, is a vocational school, not an outdoor recreation facility, and that, as a vocational school, the Range Complex is not permitted in our agricultural and residential community. That ruling has been appealed, and a decision from the North Carolina Court of Appeals is still pending. In November of 2013, a new permit was issued to allow the Range Complex to operate as a firing range under a new firing range ordinance. There's also pending a lawsuit that is scheduled to be heard in January, which has to do with the procedural errors in the county's process of interpretation and executing its own policies with regard to rezoning the Range Center site as a firing range. Changing the zoning ordinance text in order to make legitimate court rulings moot is just not the right thing to do. We appeal to your integrity and your sense of fairness to the residents of Cedar Creek and Cumberland County, and again urge you to oppose the amendment or to postpone your decision until the courts have settled pending legal issues regarding this matter. Thank you for your attention. And could we have everybody to stand that's opposed to the amendment?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers?
No, ma'am, that was the only speaker.
All right. Are there questions by... Should I close the public hearing first? All right, let me close the public hearing first. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this one is for the attorney, and I just want to matter clarity on this. With rephrasing this, is there urgency to do this, or can we... What would make the difference if we wait to a court ruling on this and opposed to doing it tonight? Is it something that has to be done tonight?
It's just a recommendation from the Planning Board and from the attorney. No, sir, it doesn't have to be done at all. We're not rephrasing anything, Mr. Evans. This is just simply not a defined term. I would like to see an end to this, I mean, court processes, that this has been going on now for two years, and these folks have spent a lot of money, the county has spent a lot of effort and money, too, really, in this. And I think out of fairness to the folks that are keeping this litigation alive for the effort they're putting into it, I mean, we need to clean this up so that everybody's on board with understanding what the ordinance says. And that's, I mean, when you've got a loose term like this, it's not defined, and lawyers are arguing it different ways, that's why this litigation keeps going on.
Well, let me ask you this, Madam Chair, I hope you don't mind, but let me ask you this. You speak in terms of matter of fairness. This is, and like you said, it's been going on for quite a while now. And the citizens that are in opposition, that was in opposition of this range and what it brings to their community, the issue of changing what it would be a training facility to an educational, help me to understand that again, please? So everyone will understand.
No, sir, we've... The ordinance, the permit that's, they're arguing in the Court of Appeals, the second permit, was before the firing range regulations were adopted. So it was under, the ordinance was in effect in, before June of last year. At that time, the ordinance provided that every lawful use of land had to be permitted, and if there was no classification for it, then it had to be permitted like the classification that it was most like by looking at the impacts on land, on adjoining land that it had. That was what the North Carolina Court of Appeals had declared the law in North Carolina to be, you know, back then, a couple years ago, four years ago, I guess now, in a case. That's the reason our ordinance was in that state, ours and a lot of other jurisdictions. But in any event, when people say that it's not a recreation, outdoor recreation facility, no, it's never been classified as an outdoor recreation facility. It's being, it was classified as more like an outdoor recreation facility than anything else because of the impacts to the adjoining property owners, which were believed by planning staff and the planning board to be noise, dust, projectiles, the things that you might find happening from outdoor recreation that is permitted in A1 districts. So that's the reason that everybody keeps talking about being a recreation district. The judge in the second case that was heard in Superior Court did, in fact, rule that it was a vocational school. He said that, under our words, was a vocational school. That is what the text amendment is about. That's pending in the Court of Appeals. That's already been heard in the Court of Appeals. I mean, we're expecting a decision on that any time. But this is just to try to put some clarity in the ordinance and so that everybody knows where they stand, both the plaintiffs in this matter and the county, in terms of defending these lawsuits or moving forward with this stuff. I mean, right now, it's just not a defined term. The way it's always been applied is it's applied to institutions like Fayetteville Technical Community College, and I think everyone agrees that this shooting range is not anything like Fayetteville Technical Community College.
Okay, but, and Madam Chair, I'll wrap this up right now, I promise. With the phrasing of the educational part of it now, the training school or whatever you call it, what was that you termed it as?
It's, right now, it's an outdoor firing range, but what we're asking for is a definition in the ordinance of a vocational school, vocational school.
Okay. So by it being, by the wording change to vocational school, what difference would that make? Because I want everybody to just understand, especially...
If the Court of Appeals rules, if the Court of Appeals overturns the Superior Court judge, that's what, that's what it's going to be anyway. If the Court of Appeals rules that, yes, this, in fact, is a vocational school under the county ordinance, or the county, that the county's loosely defined vocational, or undefined vocational school term includes something like Tiger Swan, then if this is not fixed, then it would be another issue in this ongoing legal saga. That's why I'm asking for it to be fixed.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start by saying I have been in support of this project. I have been in support of our firing ranges. But I got to tell you, I'm getting a little bit tired of this thing keep coming back to us, and we're voting on it, and then it seems to be, and the perception is to the community out there, is that the rules are getting changed in the middle of the game. And, Madam Chair, I would like to direct our legal staff and our planning board to come to us with some finality to this and not come back to us again at a later time, because if I'm not mistaken, we have been going back and forth on this thing for about two years with different definitions and different criteria and everything. And I'm not pandering anywhere, because I have been supporting this project all along, but when it comes to us seven, we expect to have the best facts that we can have, to make the best decision we can have with the information that we're given, and I just don't believe that we're getting it on this one. And I'm sorry, but it's just, it's been going on too long. Thank you.
I believe this was due to a decision that was made last month.
Well, from the Planning Board, I believe it was last month, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I forgot your name.
Oh, it's Charles Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. You know what? And I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Keith, as well. He was saying, this is an ongoing saga. And if you don't mind, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues, I would like to make a, there wasn't a motion made, I don't think, but I would like to make a motion that we deny changing the wording of this facility until a court. And I'm not pandering anywhere, because I have been supporting this project all along, but when it comes to us seven, we expect to have the best facts that we can have, to make the best decision we can have with the information that we're given. And I just don't believe that we're getting it on this one. And I'm sorry, but it's just, it's been going on too long. Thank you.
I believe this was due to a decision that was made last month.
Well, from the planning board, I believe it was last month, yes ma'am.
Okay. I forgot your name.
Oh, it's Charles Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. You know what, and I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Keith as well, he was saying, this is an ongoing saga. And if you don't mind, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues, I would like to make a, there wasn't a motion made, I don't think, but I would like to make a motion that we deny changing the wording of this facility until a court, till the court makes their final decision on what it should be.
Let me ask a question. If no decision is made, is that not the same thing? If no motion is made?
That would be correct.
That would be the same thing, so it would not be needed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
All right. So you seconded it too?
I just seconded.
All right. Okay, you've heard the motion, a motion has been made to deny the action.
Madam Chair, I'm not going to support this motion, because, I'm going to tell you why.
I don't either.
Because I want to give our planning staff and our legal team 30 days to come back to us with everything that we need to know on this thing, be able to let us make a decision based on this. This thing could easily be tied up in court for years and years and years. And to put a definitive time on that, Commissioner Evans, I just don't think that it's prudent. I think we need to make a decision. And what I'm going to ask is our staffs come to us with more definitive information, with background on this, because I'm ready to make a decision on this based upon the facts that are presented to us, and not always changing. It wasn't a substitute, it was just a comment.
But my question to you, Commissioner Keith, is, why can't, why can't we vote, have this motion, and possibly vote against what was presented to us, and still direct staff to come back with the information that you're requesting, and then if it needs to come back before commissioners again, we do it that way? That, I think that would be just my thinking. I think we could do both of those.
I'm going to choose not to support your motion now, for the reason...
But it's not making sense.
Okay, just a minute.
We all get our choices.
Okay, I understand.
Just a minute. Order. You're not going to listen to me either, like the other man didn't. Wait a minute, Mr. Faircloth.
Madam Chair.
And then me somewhere in there, and Mr. Melvin.
I don't favor just outright denying this motion, but I do favor delaying the motion. And at this time, I would like to make a substitute motion that we table this action until we have the facts in hand.
Is that not what I was trying to do to start with?
I don't know.
All right, Mr. Keith, Mr. King.
Madam Chairman, you know, we, the planning board recommended this action, and it seems that they're looking out for what's best for the county.
For the county.
And our attorney, that we hired him to help us stay out of trouble, if you will, I don't understand why we're not listening to the direction offered by these individuals. I mean, could somebody help me with that? I mean, we, our attorney has suggested a certain action that we should take. We may feel differently, okay? However, obviously we do, by virtue of this motion. But what, I'm trying to understand what's the rationale behind going in opposition, if I understand correctly, what the planning board is advising, and our attorney is advising.
All right, that's a question that he's asking. Let me go ahead and hear from everybody.
Okay. If his direct question to me, what I heard from the attorney was, if the court does this, then that. If the court does that, then this, okay? That, to me, interjects some uncertainty into the issue that, as Jimmy said, he wants to have it done and done. And so if the court rules a certain way, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but if they come a certain way, we're going to have to come back and visit this again. Is that correct?
No, sir, I mean, as far as the impact on Tiger Swan with the court rules, certainly. But as far as the impact on everybody else in this ordinance, I would recommend, based on what we've gone through in this situation, recommend this text amendment in this ordinance, regardless of whether, how Tiger Swan works out, because we don't need to go through this again. I'm trying to devise ways that we don't go through this extended litigation on issues like this. I'm trying to learn from our past deficiencies. This ordinance lane's been around a long time for any of us, and it's not that, but it's...
Can you add a little bit of clarity to this?
Not much.
Oh goodness.
We were asked, well, because the facts are out, the facts are the facts, we were asked to draft a definition of vocational school. We did the best we could do with the help of the attorney. Nothing's going to change in 30 days. The only thing that will change this would be the outcome of the courts. The outcome of the courts won't, it may occur in 30 days, and then one side or another may go to the Supreme Court. But with respect to what the staff put together, what we requested put together back in February, was a definition vocational school. And that's as good as we can get in working with the attorney.
All right. I, we've all got something to say on this. I'm next, and then Mr. Melvin, and then Mr. Edge, and then Mr. Keith. Oh, then Mr. Evans.
Madam Chair, there's some clarity that I think I should say very quickly, if you'll give me, if you'll give me just 10 seconds.
Five.
Okay, I just confirmed with the attorney that this is not retroactive. This will only be for future vocational school actions. That was a big point for me, okay? So I just wanted to put that clarity in there.
And we asked, we asked him to do that. We were supposed to, we asked that this be done. It's been some months, but we said, we knew it had to be done.
So Madam Chair, since I made the motion, this may have an impact. What we're saying is, this does not impact the Tiger Swan really, is that correct?
It does not affect anything that's happened in the past. This is for, if you adopt this tonight, it's from this point forward.
It defines vocational schools going forward.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion, if I may.
Wait a minute, who seconded the motion?
He seconded.
Do you withdraw your second?
That was a point of clarity, because if this doesn't impact anything we've already done, then I don't want to delay.
All right, then we don't want to delay, okay. Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And then, you had a comment, and then Mr. Edge, who had not spoken, had a comment, and then Mr. Evans had a comment.
You and Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Edge, okay.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. The only thing we are changing in this ordinance is the definition of a vocational school.
That is correct. You're making a definition of vocational school which does not exist now.
Yeah, we didn't have a definition.
That's clear to me.
Okay, making one definition.
Go ahead and get in there.
Mr. Evans?
Okay. If we change, this has been an ongoing issue about the facility that we have now, whether it's a vocational school, or whether it's a firing range, or whatever. If we change this wording to vocational school, how many other businesses are people just going to come in with firing ranges and say it's a vocational school when it's really not a vocational school?
We're not changing the wording. What we are doing is defining what vocational school means.
But is this in respect to, because of Tiger Swan, or is this in respect to have anything to do with Tiger Swan at all?
It's all driven by Tiger Swan, because that's how the issue came up. But we've been arguing in court for over two years what vocational school means, and I'm asking the board to define that so we stop arguing about it. It will not affect Tiger Swan stuff in the past. It's, you know, the court case will decide that. We're talking about from this point forward, because we have actually had a church school. This was a couple of years, we actually were looking at this a couple of years ago, maybe even longer than that, a vocational school. There was a private Christian church school, that there was an issue with their permitting, and the issue about vocational school, all this stuff came into play. So it's not just Tiger Swan, but it's the only thing that there's, that there's any dispute about right now.
But if we do change it to vocational school, and this is my last question, if we change it vocational school, and there's issues going on in the court, now dealing with Tiger Swan and what it is classified as, and if they pull back, if they pull up this meeting and show what we changed to vocational school, will that help Tiger Swan in what they're doing?
No, sir, that, the case has already been argued in the court of appeals. The court of appeals is going to decide what, that action, on what the ordinance was when they got their second permit. It was undefined term then.
All right, unfortunately, this is, remains, county business continues to be a learning experience, and it was something that we had not encountered before with the planning board, planning staff, and I am ready now for a motion, or do we go back to the other motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion.
Is there a motion on the table?
Yes, there is.
Yes, we had a motion.
All right.
Which is?
Which is to deny. There was a motion and a second to deny.
What the attorney wanted to do?
What the attorney and the planning board recommended, which was define vocational school. So if you want to go ahead and define vocational school, what a vocational school is, then we must first vote on this motion, unless Mr. Evans decides that he wants to withdraw his motion. And I doubt that very seriously.
You are absolutely right, Madam. I'm sorry, I would not withdraw.
Call the question.
All right. You've heard the motion, which is to deny the text amendment to define vocational school. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Evans.
Those opposed to the motion?
Voting in opposition, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith and King.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I have clarity on this, that the board finds the approval of text amendment of case number P-14-38 is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan designated in the 2030 Growth Vision Plan because the zoning location of vocational schools is impacted by the policies contained in the Growth Vision Plan to promote a more diversified local economy, well-managed growth and development, the preservation of open space and rural character, and the compatible commercial development, and that the board further finds that the approval of this text amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because the principal impacts of vocational schools are the traffic congestion created by a potentially large number of students attending classes, and the need for an efficient and adequate provision of transportation, water, and sewer service for the facilities providing these services to the public.
Second. All right, you've heard the motion and the second, and we've already had discussion. Therefore, those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans.
I further like to, the second motion, to approve and adopt the text amendment of case number P-14-38, as recommended by the planning board and the planning staff.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second, those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans.
All right. Thank you.
Item? Item 3G, ma'am, is a contested conditional zoning case, case P-14-37, and I believe there are no speakers.
Correct. Well, there was a speaker in favor. There was opposition to the planning board, apparently that opposition hasn't shown up. The planning board did recommend approval of this. With one descending vote, without any opposition, you don't have to hear it.
All right. Open the public hearing?
There are no speakers.
And close the public hearing on P-14-37. All right, what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I've signed the request, moved that we've signed the request consistent with the land use plan and approve and adopt. Reasonable statement.
Second.
Second, all right. We need to vote now.
All right, you've heard the motion. Any questions, those in favor?
Unanimous.
And the second motion is to approve the CP, CZ zoning for a crematorium, meditation room, gazebo, and display of equipment and services, and that we follow the planning board and recommendations, and approve the staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion, those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Item 3H is a minimum housing code enforcement case, case MH-537-2014.
Good evening, Board. We've got four cases for you tonight. The first two are, have some consent to demolish forms filled out. Our first case is, excuse me.
Candace, do you swear, ma'am?
My fault.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth is the truth?
Yes. Our first case is MH-537-2014, it's property owned by AC Melvin, located at 1114 McLean Trail in Fayetteville. This is a single wide frame, I mean, a single family frame structure. Unoccupied, dilapidated. The property owner has signed a consent to demolish, meaning that he is unable or unwilling to make the necessary repairs, and we're seeking immediate demolition on this property.
All right. What is your pleasure on this, members of the board? All right, I have a motion. I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and order the inspector, we skip down to the inspector?
Yes, ma'am.
To remove or demolish the dwelling and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
I missed the 30 days, didn't I? I forgot to say that. All right, 30 days.
30 days.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. You've heard the motion. Ready to vote? Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 3I, case MH-527-2014.
This property is owned by Charles Crockett, located 1109 Shaw Road. It's a double-wide mobile home. It's abandoned, or unoccupied, and once again, the property owner signed a consent to demolish on this property. We're seeking immediate demolition.
All right. What is your pleasure, Mr. Evans, Mr. Edge?
I move that, do we need to open, no speakers, I don't get...
Oh, do I need to open the public hearing?
There are no speakers.
And close the public hearing?
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, and to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion and the second, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Ms. Fairley will be doing the next two.
The next case is Minimum Housing 519-2014.
Ms. Fairley, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth is the truth?
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you. All right. There we go. This is a minimum housing demolition case at 6,000 Abco Lane. Property owner is Reginald Adams. We are seeking demolition on the property. This is a double-wide home. It's been abandoned for quite a while. The interior has been stripped of all copper.
What is your pleasure?
I'm so sorry. Are there speakers?
We have no speakers. Open the public hearing, and I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, we do adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and to order the property owner to remove and demolish the dwelling... to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days. To order the inspector to remove and demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. Also, to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same with the register of deeds.
Second.
You've heard the motion, are you ready to vote? Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
The final case is Minimum Housing, case 508-2014.
This is a trailer located at 4,001 Baird Court, owned by Rene Wagner. We're seeking demolition on the property. It is a double-wide. It has been vandalized and stripped of a lot of the interior, and has extreme weather damage.
All right. I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Faircloth?
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, and that we order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, and order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. And that we direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
I'll second. Those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the final public hearing is item 3L, and it's a public hearing on Bullard Circle and adoption of the final assessment resolution. At your June 16th meeting, you adopted a preliminary assessment resolution and authorized the county to move forward with an assessment project to provide water to the citizens in the Bullard Circle area. At that time, we scheduled a public hearing for this evening so that any interested individual could appear and ask any questions or make any comments to the board. The notice of the public hearing was advertised, and a copy of the preliminary assessment resolution was mailed to each property owner. Just as a reminder, some of the key terms of the special resolution are that the basis of the assessment is an equal rate per lot. Only 50% of the total cost will be assessed to the property owner, and the payment terms are 15 annual installments with an interest rate at 6%. The recommendation is, after the public hearing, is to recommend that you adopt the final assessment resolution to provide the water to the Bullard Circle area.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on the Bullard Circle preliminary assessment resolution.
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing on the Bullard Circle assessment hearing. And I will move that we adopt the final assessment resolution to provide public water service to the Bullard Circle area.
Second.
You've heard the motion, other comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Items of business, item number four is a presentation by Ms. Brenda Jackson on the North Carolina NCFAST program. And also, at the end of the presentation, there's a budget revision that we're asking on approval for.
All right.
Good evening.
Ms. Jackson, I'm forgetting so many things.
Let me tell you how impressed I was when I read that report. I know that you and your staff have been going through a whole lot of stuff for a long, long time. And the blame for everything gets put on you. The buck stops with you. But when I read that report and looked at it, and took it into, you know, just kind of mulled over it a little bit, I mean, that's an awesome task. That's an awesome task. And you all have handled it with grace under pressure and dignity. And I want to thank you before you give me this two-minute report.
We need to give our hands what we need to do.
It was great, it was great.
Well, I'd just like to say that, thank you for that, but I just stand in front of you to represent 640 employees who are working very, very hard. Retirees and temps, and this has truly been a team effort. But I do thank you, but really, the thanks goes to the staff. We just try to lead that ship. We try to help them get the resources that they have. And thanks to county management, they're very supportive. You guys, of course, we have our board chair and our board. It just has taken a village to accomplish this task. And so, this is, thank you is admirable, but it's just a lot of staff. And I'm gonna be honest with you, they're tired. They're exhausted.
I can understand that.
They're overwhelmed. And unfortunately, we are not through this storm yet. So bear with us and be patient with us, but I just thank you on behalf of the staff. And we really do appreciate your recognition of the hard work, dedication, and really sacrifice. They've sacrificed time with their families, with vacations and everything else to get this work done on behalf of the citizens. And so, you know, it's important that we get the services out there. And this has been tough, and we'll continue to do it, so thank you.
Have we invited any legislators, or the governor, or any member of the government to sit through any of that process?
Yes, we actually had Representative Rick Glaser came and actually processed, called him, and Maria, our board chair, came in February, and actually came to the office and made phone calls and did telephone interviews for our food stamp cases. And so, they have been very supportive as well.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Let me make sure I got this right. Am I using the right? I'm trying to make sure I got this clicker right. Great, thank you. So just a little bit about how we got started here and kind of where our role is. We are federally mandated, state-supervised, and locally administered. And just to kind of give you an idea of just the magnitude of the work that we're talking about. And so, there's a lot of information in these PowerPoints. We won't go through all of these details. I'm gonna skim of them real quickly. And of course, at your leisure, you can read the details. But I think it's important for the citizens to know that we're talking about 33,000 food stamp cases, about 50 Medicaid cases, and about 4,000 childcare cases. And that equates to about 10,000, excuse me, $10 million in our local.
How many Medicaid cases?
It's about 50,000 ongoing Medicaid cases.
I didn't hear the thousand.
Yeah, 50,000 ongoing Medicaid cases, 33,000 approximately food stamp cases, and 4,000 childcare cases, which equates to about, somewhere around about $10 million in federal revenues that is then returned back into the economy in goods and services to the citizens of Cumberland County, just to get a magnitude of our existing workload. What has happened, new mandates. You know, with government, something's always changing. The first mandate was work support strategies, which is a whole idea of trying to do services differently, providing services more efficiently and effectively to allow citizens to apply for services anywhere, 24 hours, seven days a week, through whether it's walk-in, fax, computer, electronic, however, they want to apply for services. And that was called work support strategies. And then we have North Carolina families accessing services through technology, often called NCFAST, and that's what everyone has heard about. And there's seven or eight projects to this, and it's rolling out in different phases. Our first project, one was Food Stamps, Food and Nutrition Program, but everybody knows it as the Food Stamp Program. It rolled out, and of course, we had the USDA to issue a mandate to us in early January through about March to mandate us to catch up that workload. And so, we worked about two weeks of overtime. And what was at risk there was the feds threatened to withhold the federal revenues. And those federal revenues pays 50% of the administration, which means 50% of the staff salary, is covered through these federal revenues. And so, we worked really hard. We're proud to say we've caught food stamps up. The next phase, which is the largest program that we have, is our Medicaid program. We have WorkFirst, Cash, and Refugee Assistance, but those are small programs. The big program is those 50,000 Medicaid cases. In addition to that, the applications that are coming in. And on top of that, we have the Affordable Care Act, we have MAGI, we have childcare. All of these are rolled into NCFAST. And NCFAST is the new electronic system that we, the staff, use to determine eligibility for all of our public assistance programs. And so, I'm not gonna go into details about those programs. In addition to that, we have the Affordable Care Act that came into effect October last year. And what the Affordable Care Act did was expand the eligibility for Medicaid for certain criteria. And those were our family and children's Medicaid, which is our largest program. And it started using what we call a tax methodology. And so, a part of the Affordable Care Act, and one of the benefits that citizens can apply for when they go to the federal marketplace and they look at those services, is Medicaid and Help Choice. And so, we had to implement that program in October. The modified adjustable gross income is part of the Affordable Care Act. It changes the way we determine eligibility for Medicaid for families and children. And that's that tax methodology. We were supposed to start getting those applications October 1st, 2013. However, we did not receive those cases until February. So we've already started behind the eight ball. And then, of course, we had sequestration back in October, which put a halt on hiring. It really put at risk, what could have been put at risk was childcare and other programs. A lot of the things that we were doing to try to process these cases with sequestration that impacted us because the federal revenues were at risk in our public assistance programs. So, we have EPAS. EPAS is the method in which citizens apply electronically for benefits. Our problem and our concern about EPAS is that it allows for duplicate. So a person can come to our office and apply, they can go to the library and apply, they can go to the doctor's office, and if they say, "We haven't got our case," we'll apply again. So a lot of the work that you're seeing is duplication. So we can have one citizen that can have four or five applications out there at one time. Because EPAS does not allow for you to only submit one application at a time. So we have an issue with that. If you recall, when we came last year in August, we talked about this perfect storm. And we talked about all these things coming together at one time. And the thing that we were most concerned about was that little black cloud, the unknowns. And so, now we're rolling out Medicaid, which is the second major program that we're rolling out under NCFAST. And it includes the Affordable Care Act and all those things I just talked about. So here's the storm damage. We've already, we're in the middle of this storm. And you'll see that that black cloud has gotten larger and larger and larger. In addition, all of the things that we're mandated to do, these are all the factors. The inclement weather, we closed for several days. If you know Shirley Harrison, Assistant Director for DSS, she told me when I came here six years ago, it never snows in Cumberland County. And it has snowed every year since we've been here, so I always remind her of that. So we had the agency closing for inclement weather, which was unprecedented in the number of days that we were out of work because of the weather. Of course, we have lots and lots of threats by the feds. The state and the federal government mandates us, but nobody said that they had to do a great job in doing it. And so, the same governing body that has issued us NCFAST and Affordable Care Act is also the same governing body that is demanding that we do this work that they put us behind the eight ball and do it, and to do that quickly. And so, that's that black cloud. But there's a little ray of sunshine there. And through all of this, it's been tough. But we can say today that we're excited that our food stamp cases are up to date. The applications and the research, all that work that we did in February and March, we've been able to maintain that workload and it is current. So citizens are getting their food stamps in a very timely manner. And we're really proud of that. So, these are the numbers that we're facing in terms of the storm damage. I'm calling it around Medicaid, the number of cases that we have in the backlog. Remember, we didn't start getting these cases until February. We're supposed to get them in October. The state also, it's a lot of technical stuff. It's hard to explain all this in one quick pop. But the recertifications also, these are cases, ongoing cases. Every year, they have to be looked at. Those cases were delayed during the food stamp for Medicaid. And so, we have all that workload now that's coming together, all what we call backlog, untimely work. The gist of it, and this does not include adult Medicaid, which is a very complicated program. There's about 500-plus cases in the backlog for that. WorkFirst and Help Choice, another thousand or so cases, and about 1,900 cases. These are our timely cases. Even though we're doing a backlog, these are untimely. We still have citizens coming in every single day that's still applying. So you're talking about 1,900 cases that are what we call timely. And then the recertifications, that's 6,400 cases. This is just for the month of August. 6,400 ongoing cases that it's time for them to be looked at again as part of their recertification. And so, we had in June, just the Medicaid cases that was considered in the backlog that the feds are saying now, we have to have done by August 31st. We were looking at 6,355 cases. And as of Friday, we have got those cases down to 1,823 cases. We have processed 4,532 Medicaid applications in about two months. And it has been long hours, 10-hour days, Saturdays, staff taking computers home, and every creative method we could think of to get this work done. And it has been a monumental task. We worked this past Saturday, from 7:30 to 4:30 this past Saturday. And so, what we're proud of, and the staff understands the importance of getting this work done because for every one of those cases that you see, that's a citizen who doesn't have their Medicaid. And they understand, and they're committed to that. So what are we looking at in terms of our challenges and why we're here today? We're really, really concerned over the next six months. We have about another 18 months of this because we've only rolled out not even 50% of the Medicaid program. And so, these are the challenges we're facing. There's no edits in that EPAS system, which means citizens can make multiple applications. These cases are complex. These are not food stamp cases where you can easily process. A customer needs to bring in a receipt, and we can process the cases. These cases have property, bank accounts, life insurance. It takes a lot of research. So these cases are much more complicated.